So, good evening. We will be conducting tonight's meeting in the council chambers and in a virtual setting using Zoom to allow staff and public to social distance. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting tonight on Wave and online through the city's YouTube channel. If you would like to participate in live public comment via Zoom platform, please refer to the agenda for instructions. Pastor Mark Andriata will be giving the invocation this evening, and the mayor Silhaj will begin the meeting immediately after.
Well, thank you all. Let's pray. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity of those elected to serve the people of our city. We pray a blessing over our new mayor and the rest of the council. Help them to act with character and conviction. Help them to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us all to speak with charity and restraint. Give them a spirit of service and remind them that they are the stewards of your authority. Guide them to be the leaders your people need and help them to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with them and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew all of us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love, in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you. That was special to have him here on your night. All right, I have 6:02, so we will call this meeting to order. Ms. Skinlin, can I get a real call?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Councilmember Andriata.
Here.
Councilmember Joyner.
Here.
Councilmember Carl Skent. Councilmember Lawrenceon.
Here.
And Mayor Silhaj.
Here. And report from closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we had closed session on November 22nd and then also this evening before this meeting, and there is no reportable action, although staff did receive direction.
Thank you very much. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, which Councilmember Lawrenceon will lead us in.
Please join in.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Bill. All right, agenda modifications. Do we have any of the council members? Nope. All right, it looks like we have none. Six is presentations, and so 6A will be the swearing-in ceremony. The city clerk will be administering the oath of office to incoming Mayor Holly Andriata and Mayor Pro Tem Paul Joyner, and it will be my last official action as mayor, and it is an honor to be able to turn it over to you. How does this go now, Gwen? Do it separately, so she can get the pictures.
See if this is working. You're right. I state your name. Solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations. Can I take a picture of my family? Test, test, test. Test, test, test.
You just got to be right here.
Want to move over here now? Oh, sure. Want me to take my car too?
Yeah.
And also my district thing. Oh, that doesn't want to come out. I can't get that off. This is my word, I believe. It's my word, not your word.
You guys can come up here and take a picture. Come through here.
Maybe one of you can go in front, so you can all squeeze in. I don't know if they'll be able to get y'all. Hold on. Turn to the side.
Okay, so next we are going to have the swearing-in of the mayor pro tem. So, I state your name.
I, Paul Joyner. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
That's what your inside voice, Paul, inside voice. There's no breaks. There's no breaks. One second. Thank you very much for me.
Anybody like cupcakes? Take a cupcake if you guys want one.
Fine, we have a better chance.
Okay, are we ready to continue? Yeah, eat your cupcake, yes. Well, first of all, I just want to say, um, thank you for the patience and allowing me indulge in that moment. It's a great honor, and it is my goal and desire to serve well and have big shoes to fill with the prior mayors who sit at this dais, and you did a great job. You did a great job, yep. And I've learned a lot from you and from you, and so I just, it's going to be a great year for Lincoln, so, yeah. What was that?
You're blaming us?
Are we trying to figure out why we have a... Okay, okay, all right, we'll keep going. All right. So, actually, this is really a great honor. My first official act as mayor is item 6B, which is adopting the proclamation honoring the 50th anniversary of wounding in the line of duty of Sergeant Robert Broso and the end of watch of Officer Leslie Paul Schelbach. And do you have that proclamation with me? And the family is here, and so...
Yes.
Right, yes, I will.
Yes, please join me. Thank you so much for being here and allowing us to bestow this honor upon you. Proclamation number 2021-08, a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Lincoln of the 50th anniversary of wounding in the line of duty of Sergeant Robert Broso and the end of watch of Officer Leslie Paul Schelbach. Whereas Sergeant Robert Broso was wounded and Patrolman Les Schelbach was shot and killed while attempting to apprehend three robbery suspects on Sunday, December 12, 1971. And whereas three armed suspects, two were escapees from the Utah State Prison, robbed a market in the city of Lincoln, and ordered the store owner and customer into a walk-in refrigerator at the rear end of the store. And whereas, the owner of the store slipped out an auxiliary door and called the police, while the suspects fled in a vehicle, and an off-duty Lincoln Police Department Sergeant Bob Broso received the call and responded in his private vehicle when he saw the suspects traveling southbound on Highway 65 from Fifth Street. And whereas, when the suspects spotted Sergeant Broso, they sped up and, driving too fast, crashed their car on a sharp turn on Moore Road just west of what is now Delancey Way. And whereas Sergeant Broso exited his car and ordered the suspects to surrender, but he was immediately shot in the face, chest, arms, and left side by a shotgun blast, causing him to take cover behind the car. And whereas Sergeant Broso was seriously wounded and ran to a nearby farmhouse to make an emergency phone call to the Lincoln Police Department dispatch, and whereas Officer Leslie Schelbach responded to the scene and upon arrival was fatally shot in the chest with a semi-automatic M16 rifle, rupturing his aorta. And whereas the suspects fled the scene in Sergeant Broso's private vehicle, and one of the suspects was located in a field armed with three firearms, but the other two weren't arrested until December 16, 1971, at an apartment in Sacramento. And whereas the suspects were charged with murder, attempted murder, assault against a police officer, armed robbery, auto theft, and conspiracy, and in 1972, two of the suspects were convicted of murder and sentenced to life in state prison, but the other suspect committed suicide in his jail cell during the murder trial. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Lincoln hereby proclaims and honors Sergeant Broso for his bravery and dedication to the community and Officer Schelbach's ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty, passed and adopted this 14th day of December 2020, and it will be a unanimous vote. God bless you.
Unless there's discussion, I'd be happy to make that motion.
Please do, thank you.
Yep.
Is there any discussion? All right, you have a second? Did you real call? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Silhaj.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skent. Councilmember Lawrenceon.
Yes.
And Mayor Andriata.
Yes. All right, thank you very much for that. Okay. All right, item number seven, public comment. City clerk, do we have any public comments or items not on the agenda?
I do have a hand raised on Zoom. Lena Lebowski, please go ahead.
Good evening, council members, and congratulations, Mayor Andriata. I just have a question. A few months ago, Councilmember Carl Skent was negotiating with the Placer County regarding North Auburn use of our regional sewer treatment, and I haven't heard any results of any conclusion. I'm just wondering if anything has come of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lena.
I don't see any other hands in Zoom, but I do see Byron Chapman in chambers. Please come forward.
Byron Chapman, 12 Bridges area. Once again, congratulations on your position, and Paul, you've came back around to circle again, so congratulations on the move as well. Two very quick items. One is having to do with, and I brought this subject up before, is less than half a block from here on F Street. We still have the sidewalk that hasn't been addressed. If it's open to the public, it should be open to all of the public, not just some of the public. I turned that complaint in to the ADA coordinator literally six months and two weeks ago. It is not attached to the ADA issues that were involved in the court case. This is a hazard that came up in due time. It seems that marking it off so people in wheelchairs and walkers can't get through there, but, golly, anybody else can use their two legs, certainly can. It is an ADA issue. It's also a tripping hazard for other people, and you know, for right now, the tripping hazard has gone away for the people who walk, but the people in wheelchairs don't. I really don't understand the mindset behind it, truly don't. With that, on a refreshing note, I met Anthony, and I didn't get his last name, so I apologize, from the Code Enforcement Department on Friday, the 3rd, and he did something in less than 10 minutes that I couldn't get the city manager or the ADA coordinator to do in six months. Very simply, he took the time. I'd met him not more than five minutes, and him and I took a half a block stroll down the street. It was amazing, I've got to tell you. Not only is it very, I want to say, well-spoken and very, very, I think it's a great move for the city. I will be talking with him more, but I got him to go down there when I couldn't get the city manager and the ADA coordinator to do it for six months. So, I think there's an issue there and a problem. But for what it's worth, for now, I want to wish everybody a wonderful holiday and Christmas, and hopefully everyone will have a safe and happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Anymore on Zoom or in the room? Okay. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chapman, for your comments. We are very pleased with Mr. Anderson and his code enforcement work, and I'm glad he was able to take the time to talk with you. And then, Mr. Scott, I was just wondering, would it be appropriate just to give like a 30-second update on the COJA for Ms. Lebowski or Councilwoman Carl Skent? Would you like to do that just real quick? Thank you.
I was going to cover it in information items, but the Oversight Committee had a meeting just yesterday. The committee consists of Councilman Lawrenceon, myself, Supervisor Gore, and Supervisor Holmes. We received a presentation from the status of negotiations, which are actually being done by staff, and I can say that the result is favorable. There's agreement that's been reached on the money that the county and the responsibilities that the county owes the city. We are embarking and will start having more frequent Oversight Committee meetings to define the ultimate governance structure and organizational structure of the regional sewer, which will change, and it will become a truly regional asset, and that's an ongoing process that is going to take probably a year at least to achieve. We will, I will do more frequent updates as information becomes available. The Oversight Committees are a Brown Act Committee and are open to the public. In fact, we had a member in the public today. But I think, my feeling is that we are seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, which is very heartening, because it's been a long, long tunnel. That's about all I can say for now. But I, as we have, as we make some decisions, actually, we'll be bringing it back to the City Council for a vote after we do the internal discussion, so that's where it sits.
Great, thank you, Councilwoman Carl Skent. I really appreciate that update, and I'm sure Lena and the public does too. Okay, our next item is item eight, Consent Agenda. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine business and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the City Council or residents request a specific item to be removed from the consent agenda for a separate action. Any items removed will be considered after the remainder of the consent agenda. So, I know Councilwoman Carl Skent, which one was it again that you wanted?
I want to move 8J.
That's what I thought you said.
And I'd like to make a general comment. There are several items on the consent agenda that are consent agenda items that are concerning ADA projects, and I would like staff to periodically provide the council, maybe during the budget process, I'd like to know the money that we're spending specifically on ADA work, because it's embedded throughout the CIPs in various ways. I don't know if we're tracking it, but we should be tracking it separately. If I have consensus, I'd like to request that from staff.
Okay.
Any others?
Did want to make a comment on 8E, on the AB 1600 Development Impact Fee Reports, and just request at some point we maybe workshop or study what all of that is, because I think that it's big and confusing and...
Okay.
That's that, I don't need to pull it.
You don't need to pull it.
Just ask that if we could agree to maybe workshop that at some point, that'd be great.
So, 8H, I do have a quick clarification on it. Again, I don't want to pull it either, but a quick clarification.
Okay. Okay. Are there any members of the public who would like to request the council pull any items? Mr. Chapman? Okay?
Really?
Were there any others on Zoom?
On Zoom.
Oh, I need to make the clarification.
He's going to make it, yeah. So, okay. Okay, so, can I have a motion for the rest of the consent agenda, please?
One second.
Okay. Move to the second. The roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Carl Skent. Councilmember Lawrenceon.
Yes.
Councilmember Joyner.
Hi.
Councilmember Silhaj. And Mayor Andriata.
Yes. Okay, so, would you like to make your clarification on yours first, and then we'll pull the other ones? Okay, go ahead.
It's just very quick. On the GSEC board appointment, we've got me listed as an alternate, and that's not the way that board works. There is no alternate.
Oh.
So, and what you're going to find out is you are not even seated. Once we approve it, that board is going to have to vote at your first meeting to approve you as a member of that board. So, the point being, there is no alternate. Our representative must attend, otherwise we are not represented in that meeting.
But the city manager is allowed to attend but not vote. The representative, it happens all the time. So, we at least could know the discussion, but you would be the only one who's voting.
Correct. We were just going off the template that was handed down, so there wasn't one listed last year.
Yeah, the way we've done it in the past, and most of the cities did, because there was some Brown Act issues and a desire to have some longevity in certain people filling the seat. The appointment was made to the city manager, who could then delegate that to any individual he wished, you or she wished. So, we've done it differently this time.
Thank you for that clarification duly noted. Okay, item 8J. This one is Adopt Resolution 2021-219, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for services with SDI Presence LLC for project management services in the amount not to exceed $504,000 for the city's financial software implementation, migrating, migration, excuse me, and training. And I don't know if Ms. Brown wanted to do that, or Mr. Scott, did you want to, or do we want to find out? Was there a specific question or just wanted to have a presentation?
The staff report identifies a contractor that was chosen by the committee. The RFI lists the criteria for choice, but it doesn't normally, in the staff report, you have the results of the scoring for the contractors, and we don't have that here. So, we don't know on what criteria they were picked, and I think for the public record, we should have that in the staff report.
And for me, I just wanted to maybe have you guys give like a, you know, broad overview. It's a big project, it's important to us. It'd be nice to just have a tiny bit of discussion so people know what's going on.
I agree. It's a big, it's a big item with a big ticket. Jen Brown is on Zoom somewhere.
I'm here.
Can bring her up.
Do I need to come into the room or do it remotely?
I think you're okay. But we, did you hear the questions?
I did. So, the first question about how we scored the, we had two people submit for their proposals, and one of them would only work with two vendors, and I didn't want to limit our pool of potential software vendors to the two that they would implement, and so I could not go with them. And that was the reasoning behind the SDI, the one that we chose. And then, overall...
...requirement.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
So, they purely... So they purely did not meet our requirements. It wasn't a scoring issue. They didn't qualify.
Correct, because they would only implement two specific vendors.
I, I I agree with, I'm agreeing with this solution, but I think it was not clear from the staff report that they were non-responsive. Alls we need is that in the report and I'm satisfied with that part of it. So but I think I go along with Councilman Alyssa that it would be nice to give us a little bit of a briefing on what this contractor is.
Jen, can you do a couple of things? One is just for public knowledge, explain a little bit what an ERP is and why it matters. And then describe to some, to some extent, what the contract is calling out for SDI to do as part of their duties.
Sure. So an ERP software package is kind of the backbone of the city. It's how everything is run based on all of our financials, payroll, HR, as well as, you know, all daily functions, utility billing. Everything integrates to that. It's the core, core piece of software for a city. And so it's a very, as you can imagine, it's a very large implementation project and we always, you know, we, we are low on resources here and so this is not something that even, even cities that have a lot of resources are able to do on their own, just because it's a very specialized knowledge that people have. So we reached out for someone who has done several of these. They're actually on Zoom. If you have questions specific for them, answer them. But they have, they've done several of these and have the experience in implementing these sort of systems in complex environments like ours. There's going to be a lot of cleanup. There's going to be a lot of migration of data and integration with existing systems. And we just didn't want to screw it up. And so we're bringing in the professionals to help us with this project. The ER, the actual RFQ for the software is a public and it'll close, I think, just after the holidays, the first week in January around there. And then we'll go through the application, the proposals that we get for that as well as any train, early onsite demos that we can do. But because we're in California and the very specific requirements that we have with PERS and everything else, it really limits the the pool of companies that would work for us. But we're excited for kind of coming into the 20th century with our financial software because what the way that we have to do things now is very manual and labor intensive and we're looking forward to improvements.
Please, please, please tell me you meant the 21st century.
Twenty, I'm, I'm saying if we can get into the 20th century.
I think she meant what she said. Yes, that's funny.
I will add just a couple of things. Not every city uses a project management approach to implementing an ERP. But the cities that don't regret it use a project management approach. I mean, it, it really is complicated. SDI is one of the most commonly used firms for this function. Coincidentally, because I wasn't part of the selection process at all, but they were the firm that performed that function in India when I was there the last two years when we did our EMP ERP implementation. So I feel very, very good that we've got a firm to take us through this process. You usually retain a group like this at the beginning of the process before you even pick a vendor because part of the trick is negotiating the right contract right from the beginning. So that's why we've gone to this trouble before we even have a vendor. It's the appropriate way to do it. I feel good about this one, so.
Which brings up a question. One of the tasks then will be for them to vet the vendor. So not because it starts out as negotiate the contract. But are they, are they going to actually be involved in evaluating the vendor?
Yes. Usually the project manager actually runs the evaluation process.
Right. The I didn't see that as a task. The other thing, and I guess this is a question for Jim. This 580 is coming out of the CIP for the ERP system. But there wasn't much more money than that in the CI, in the actual CIP, was there?
There was. Money was when we, this last year when we reevaluated the cost of the SIS software, we did add money this 2122 budget.
You remember how much that was?
I do not, but I could look it up and get back to you what the total is.
I can tell you that in India, we spend, I think it was 1.2 million on the project, and I believe that was independent of the SDI contract.
Right, that's my, my point. So we should be seeing another change to the CIP in this year's, next year's budget account for, to give us up because I, I seem to have remembered 700K and maybe a million, but we're talking like quite a bit more.
Potentially. I, I don't know that the comparability between India and here is exact, but things have not gotten less expensive over the last two years.
No, and we're no simpler. Also, we're no simpler than India.
I'll, I'll get you an up-to-date estimate. I'll get the whole project. I'll get that for you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown and Mr. Scott for that information. Are there any more questions or comments from the council? Do we have any public comment on this item?
None in Zoom and none in the chambers, ma'am.
Okay, can I have a motion for this?
I will move to support this very, very, very important contract.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Carleskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrenceon.
Yes.
Councilmember Silhi and Mayor Andriata.
Yes. Okay, the other item that was pulled was eight K. Resolution 2021-220, authorizing the city manager to approve a budget augmentation of 8,000 from Fund 735 for CIP V215 and a purchase order for 1,143,000 to procure two auto car Heil Python residential garbage collection trucks and one auto car Heil Durapack commercial garbage collection truck for use by Solid Waste Division of Public Works. A total expense of 1,135,000 for procurement of these garbage trucks is included within the approved 2122 budget in Fund 735, PFE Community Services, Solid Waste, and augmentation of 8,000 from Fund 735 for CIP V215 is also requested. Fund 735 is projected to have 2122 fiscal year ending balance of 1,735,674. And Mr. Scott, are you going to take this one too, or did we want to ask what the question was?
Kate Carleskin, garbage trucks.
Yes. Oh, yeah, this was Mr. Chapman's. What was your question on this, Mr. Chapman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Essentially, there was a piece of information that I was looking for in addition to the comments that I'll make here. I believe that the timeframe might have been somewhere within a year, maybe less, depends. The city had a grant for an electric garbage truck. I think, and I don't know how much money that the city had to put in for that garbage truck. So when I read the packet, I was surprised that I didn't see, I'm, I'm, I'm only guessing here because it doesn't really state that there must be combustible motors, fuel, supposed to the electric. So I know that everyone's trying to get to that area where particularly large vehicles like that are being used. So I didn't see anything here in the way if, if prices, because I looked online, I really couldn't get any prices as to what the electric truck does versus what the, the gas or the diesel do. And the other part too was, as I was looking online, I couldn't help but notice that there, that literally, I, I was surprised. There are so many vendors out there that refurbish these particular vehicles. And I don't know about all of you, but over my years is when I'd go out and buy a brand new vehicle, usually two days after I've gone off the lot with it, if I were to go sell it again, and I've already dropped 30, 40% of the value of it, just based on that's how it works. I don't know if that applies to these types of vehicles, but if they do, I, I would try to urge the city to look at, what's the cost difference in the savings? If you, if you get a vehicle that's been refurbished and you get a contract and a warranty on it, that very well could save us a chunk of change. And maybe it's already been introduced. I, I haven't heard it in the years that I've been here. But I think it would be worthwhile because, you know, when you're looking million plus dollars, it's terrific that the city has budgeted for that, so it doesn't affect the other issues. But still, if we can still save that money and get the job done, doesn't necessarily mean it has to be a new piece of equipment. If it's got a warranty to it and it's going to take care of it, we might be able to save a chunk of change by doing that, and I would hope that we would be looking at that. That was my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Mr. Scott, would you like to address that?
I'm not sure to what extent I know the answers. Angela Frost is in Zoom, but I'm not sure she will either, but can we see if Angela has? I know that when I was out there one day, they were testing an electric garbage truck. They, they had one for a while that they were, they were testing. I don't know when we're lined up to start acquiring those. Obviously, when you add something like that to a fleet, there's, there's more to it in terms of maintenance and, and operation than just simply adding it. You have to also add the expertise to be able to operate it and maintain it. But I do know that they're evaluating it, and I think we all believe that the day is coming before too long when they're going to be required. So at a certain point, we'll make that transition. But Angela, are you familiar with this at all?
Yes, I do think that fleet takes that into consideration when they're looking at new vehicle purchases. As those requests come through, they do an evaluation, and I believe there's a score sheet on here on page two of the staff report that talks about the condition of the vehicles, or excuse me, the fleet. And as they're rated very poorly, and then we could add a cost component to it, but they are given a rating. And it's kind of an assessment of, is it worth the money to repair the fleet? Or is it better to just invest in a whole new purchase? And so it was that, it was decided that it was better to make these purchases rather than to repair the current fleet. But we can add that into it just so you can see the cost to make the repairs versus the cost that you're seeing to purchase the new fleet because it is a largeable expense.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chapman? Yep. Right. Okay. Yeah, refurbishing versus brand new. Yeah. Is that go ahead.
These are new, right?
Yeah, these are, these are new vehicles.
Just on that point, to clarify, one of the trucks that's being purchased is a, is going to be in addition to the fleet, so it is not actually replacing a vehicle. And then one of the trucks that is being replaced was significantly damaged by fire, so it was deemed not repairable.
Thank you. That's good information. Go ahead, Mr. Chapman.
And maybe I wasn't clear on what I was trying to convey. I, I'm not saying that the vehicles that the city needs to replace to try to refurbish those with the cost. I thoroughly get that. What I'm looking at is going to vehicles who have already had that done by a private vendor. And that we go to those vendors to look for those vehicles that may not be brand new, but they're certified, they're ready to go. We're not putting resources into those. We're simply looking at the trucks that aren't brand shiny new. We can get the same bang for the buck and a whole lot less. That was my point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's a good point. Appreciate that. Are there any more questions from the council or comments?
Have a comment in terms of what, one thing that Mark said in terms of having to transition to electric. Are we tracking the clean fleet ruling? It will be, so the, the clean fleet ruling, it's a regulation that's going to be coming out of CARB soon, and it does expect local government to be early adopters. Specialty vehicles that have been retrofitted might get exemptions for longer. We'll be allowed to keep what we have, but we'll be expected to purchase any new purchases, electric. And so we're, I just made me realize that I don't even know the answers to this. What are our infrastructure? Do we have charging stations? Do we have a plan for it? It's very expensive. It's one of the issues against wanting public agencies fleets to be early adopters. So something we probably want to put on our radar.
I know that Mr. Osborne's evaluating all of those factors. And we don't think it's, at this point, it didn't make sense to make that kind of transition right now, but they, they're, they're looking into it so that they're aware of what.
Perfect. Much like the organics transition, it's not going to be something we're going to be able to do overnight when it comes, so it'll take some planning.
That's correct.
Are there any more public comments on this?
No mayor, no other comments.
Okay, thank you. All right, may I have a motion on eight K, please?
A second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Lawrenceon.
Yes.
Councilmember Silhi.
Yes.
Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
Councilmember Carleskin and Mayor Andriata.
Yes. Okay, item number nine, public hearings. We have none this evening. So we go on to item number 10, general business. 10A, Adopt Resolution 2021-234, Funding Additional Citywide Landscape Services. Additional landscape services will be paid from CFD Community Facilities District 2, 2018-1 Fund 285. And is Mr. Boynton going to be doing this or? Okay, thank you.
Is on, he is on Zoom. Please unmute yourself, Scott. There you go.
Can you, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Brief summary of what the item's about.
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Hang in there, Scott.
Can you guys hear me okay?
There you are. There we are.
Hello, Mayor and council members. My intent for this staff report was to be able to streamline our landscape acceptance process, allowing the city manager to approve the up and coming landscape that we're doing. Did anybody have questions on that?
Well, Scott, could you go ahead and give us a, a short report of what this item actually entails, just a little bit more detail? We would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, as I mentioned in the staff report, so the city takes over landscape areas and new developments. And when we do this process, it's hard to identify specific dates that will need to take over these areas. So this process, when we do that, typically we would come to council, get council approval to accept the new landscape areas. This would kind of streamline that process and allow the city manager to do that. When we went to RFP for for, um, our recent landscape services, we asked that contractor to provide square footage costs for the, um, any new landscape that we take over. So if we were to take over new landscape areas, we would take them over, incorporate them into the, uh, existing landscape contract. But at the, at the price given, uh, at the time of the bid for square footage cost.
My comment is this. Our, I assume this is tied in to the changes to the landscape requirements, which was, there was a class one, class two, class three. And what we're asking for is a general bid for so much a square foot from the, from our landscaping contractor for a class one or class two or class three. So that's somewhat of an automatic process then when we take.
That is, that is correct.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, sir. That is correct.
All right, thank you, Scott. Councilmember Joyner, or Vice Mayor Joyner?
Just, uh, out of curiosity, it's, and, and I don't have a problem with this, but, um, it's a delegation of authority from the council to the city manager. And it appears to be being suggested because of some urgency. But we meet every two weeks. Um, so I'm unclear. And, and again, I'm fine with, with delegating that authority, but, but I want to understand why we're doing it. Um, because the council, I think, meets frequently enough that, that any urgency could be dealt with, uh, with just a little awareness of what's coming forward.
I'm not sure that, I mean, this is adding, um, adding areas to the exist, existing contract. And I suspect that the, that when the council adopted that, there were certain implementation obligations that were delegated to the city manager. And I'm guessing this just means the same thing. This is adding extra area that will have those same delegations of authority that you did on the main contract. I, is that correct, Scott, or am I missing the point?
It, it somewhat is, but, but council has approved a dollar limit that we can spend with the current contract. So by doing this, uh, if we would have to go back and amend every area that we would take over. Um, and I'm trying to, uh, like I mentioned, streamline that so we don't have to go back to council. Just by the ones we're going to accept in this fiscal year, we'll have to go back six times um, for accepting Meadowlands Park potentially, the Twelve Bridges Entry Landscape, um, uh, Esplanada, Turkey Creek, Independence Phase One, Meadowlands Phase One, and Joyner Park, uh, Parkway Project.
Okay, so we're not, we're not technically adding those tonight. We're seeking the council's authority to add those as they come due. I think that's.
That is, that is correct. We don't have timelines on when we're going to accept those. So we could be accepting, uh, Twelve Bridges Entry, um, and potentially April. That just depends on when the city does its, uh, final major, beginning its maintenance walk. Uh, the, the requirement is a ninety day period. Once that walk begins, before that walk happens, the project has to be complete. We do the ninety day walk. At the end of that ninety day walk, the city could potentially take that over. If there's no issues, if not, it extends that ninety day period. So we don't have a real timeline as to, uh, when those projects start.
Okay, so it's just, it's solely for that listed group of projects? This isn't an ongoing?
That's. Yes, yes, sir. So, so specifically for this product, it's not specific to these, only these, um, these products I have on there. Uh, Councilmember Joyner, uh, I'm using those as a reference. So, so next year, next fiscal year, we're probably going to take more sections on. I think we might take a couple parks on Independence. It might extend that. Um, but whatever we do take on, uh, it's going to be based on the contract, the land, the current landscape contract cost. So we would just take in the square footage of the turf area, the planting area, um, at, at the, uh, current cost rate. And it, with no specific timeline as to when those periods would start.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna be okay with that, but I need some type of report out from the city manager that those actions have been taken.
Okay. I, I, I'm, I want the council to be comfortable. There's no, no reason to adopt something if, if council's uncomfortable. But if you would be okay with the agreement that whenever that's done, we port it, report it out to the city council, we will do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Councilmember Carl Skent, did you have any other comments or questions? Councilmember Lauritsen, did you have any questions or comments? Okay, right. Do we have any public comment on this item, Ms. Scanlon? Okay, and, um, we're ready for a motion if there's no more discussion from the council?
I'll go ahead and move the item. Second.
Okay, roll call, please. Councilmember Joyner?
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skent?
Yes.
Councilmember Lauritsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Silhaj and Mayor Andriata.
Yes. All right, and this next one, item ten B is a, a real fun one. Adopt, Adopt Resolution Twenty Twenty One Two Thirty Five, authorizing the mayor by resolution to execute employment agreement with Sean Scully to serve as city manager, beginning January thirty first, twenty twenty two. Mr. Scott, do you have a brief report on this?
I do.
Thank you.
And, um, this is really not fair because the council did all the work to hire Sean and the city attorney did all the work on the contract and wrote the staff report. And I get to do the report. Um, but I'm delighted. I mean, with the council, um, for the sake of the public, the report that the council went through a long process, um, we used a professional recruiter, a gentleman who actually lives in Lincoln, um, who came and did our, um, recruitment. Uh, we had more than forty applicants. The city council reviewed a longer list and narrowed it down, did a first round of interviews, narrowed it down further, then we did some additional process. And the council eventually selected, uh, Sean Scully to be the next city manager. Um, Sean is coming to us from a city management career in Riverbank, California, where he's been, I believe, five years. And, um, previous to that, he was in the city of Gustine for several years, seven or eight years, and he was city manager there for the last two of those years. Um, he comes very highly recommended. Um, we were very pleased to get to know him and to understand his capability to take on this challenge in Lincoln. Um, the contract that's in front of the city council, um, includes provisions that I will very briefly cover. The state law requires the public disclosure of compensation as it relates to senior, uh, public officials. And, uh, the contract is a five-year, has a five-year term. Um, it's got a base salary of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and, uh, the other benefits, um, and personnel conditions of the contract are the same as other employees of the city, with the exception that there is a provision for moving allowance reimbursement, um, that, uh, he will incur when he and his wife and two children are planning to find a place to move to in Lincoln. And the, the provision provides that he can be reimbursed if he finds a place to move to in Lincoln. Um, there's a, I think, twenty-five thousand dollar limit to what that could be, but it's probably less than that. Um, we are looking for him to start on Ja- January thirty first. Um, so it won't be long. He's given notice where he is and, and he's unable to be with us tonight, unfortunately, because they have a meeting tonight. And they have a long meeting tonight that he, he's got obligations he's got to fulfill. And as a man of, who fulfills his obligations, he's there and not being able to be with us tonight. He did, however, provide a statement that Mayor Andriata, I think, will read to us, if you would.
Do you want me to read it now or at the end after?
Actually, you're the mayor and not me, so I shouldn't tell.
Okay, I'll read it at the end. Um.
It's fine.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Joyner, do you have any comments about this? Anything you'd like to say?
Uh, only that this process, as long as I've been, uh, a council member, this process and the, uh, the depth of the candidate pool, uh, was far superior to any we've had in the past. We would have been, um, well-served by certainly our, our second and probably our third, uh, selection along the way. But Sean, uh, for all of us, I think, was head and shoulders above the rest. And so, uh, I'm very pleased with the process, with the selection, and very excited to work with Sean moving forward.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Carl Skent?
I have to echo what, uh, Councilman Joyner said. Uh, I'm, it's, I literally, for you that know me, it's unusual. I'm excited.
This is excited, right?
I'm excited to work with.
That's a happy face.
Right. Uh, he, uh, just impressed the hell out of me. And, uh, I think we're gonna, he's a great addition to our team, uh, as well as the rest of the city.
So let me add one more thing to that. Um, our interview process, Sean let us know that he really wants to be in Lincoln. He wasn't just looking for another city manager's job. He wanted to be in Lincoln. And the last time around, we were recruiting for a city manager, but he didn't think he was ready yet. And so when it came this time, he turned to his wife and said, I may not get another shot at this. What do you think? So I think that is really important for the public to know. He's not, he's not just taking a job. He's adopting a community that he's wanted to be a part of, uh, for several years.
Councilmember Lauritsen?
Yeah, I mean, Sean, uh, was the unanimous decision of, of, of the council. Um, we like him very much. Um, the staff, um, when, when they interviewed him, loved, loved him. And, uh, and, and the public. So, you know, he is, he is our choice.
I have just a few things, starting with the least important first. When Councilmember Joyner says that he was head and shoulders above the rest, he literally is head and shoulders above the rest. He's taller than me in heels. For some reason, that feels significant to me. I liked it. Um, he has a wicked sense of humor that is, I think, matched by a very sharp intellect. He impressed the hell out of me also. And, um, I have to say, I wasn't expecting him at first to be my top choice. And first interview, it was like, whoa, this guy. Um, I think that he's going to be a great addition to the team. And then just to echo what Councilmember Joyner said, it was really significant to me personally, um, in making that decision, particularly after all of the things the city's gone through these last few years, that we bring in someone who's a team player, that we bring in someone who is financially astute, who's going to be able to be the bulldog when we need them to be the bulldog, but also to be a part of the community and be conciliatory and be the mediator and the compromise bringer and able to really bring a community together. I think we're at a place where that can happen. And I think he's the man for the job. I think that he is going to fit right into our quirky sense of humor, which, um, not every man might be for that job or woman. But, um, I also think that he's going to really fit into our community. His family wants to be here. They want their kids to be part of it. They love our little traditions. And, um, well, that's an easy talking point. It also is significant because when we all sit here and we say we want to keep Lincoln, Lincoln, the only way you do that is making sure that your leadership likes Lincoln and, and, and values what we have and wants to build on it. And I think he does. So I'm very excited.
I think he understood that very well. So, um, what I would like to say is that, um, I would have hired him after that first round. Um, of course, we had to go through the whole process. And you're right, the other two candidates were very qualified and they, they would have done a good job. Um, what, what impresses me and Councilmember, uh, Lauritsen alluded to it was that in this process, of course, he met with us twice altogether and then individually. And he was the top choi- choice of council, but the staff all chose him, which was very significant to me because that's a huge part of the job. We, you know, everybody knows our staff is thin and we, we need to build a team. We've had some losses. And the ones that are here that are working, um, you know, diligently for this city are so excited about him. And that makes me very, very happy. And then we put together a community panel. Um, they were more of a meet and greet, but it ended up kind of being more of a panel. But he was the top choice of, of all of them. And so, um, I don't think that you could get a clearer decision than that. And that just is, um, really striking. And I would agree with Councilwoman Silhaj. When he first walked in, I was like, oh, my gosh, who's this guy? Um, and the minute he started talking, I'm like writing stuff down, smartest answer of the day. Oh, my gosh, who is this guy? And also what really impresses me is that not only is he just finishing out his term where he's at, he is working with, um, our interim, Mr. Scott, every week, and he's learning about what's going on here. I mean, he, well, actually, let me back up a little bit. I was extremely impressed at the amount of research that he did on us. Like, it was a little bit creepy because he knew us all so well. And, um, he knew a lot of the community members' names and he knew, he knew so much about our issues and what we've been going, you know, you know, the, the, the things of running this city. That, that really impressed me, the hours that he spent researching. Um, but he's been working with, with Mark every week, and he's spent a great deal of time talking to our city attorney. Um, and those relationships are already forming. And so I'm, I'm just so, so excited to, to have him here. He showed up for the Christmas parade. He couldn't stay, um, later because the little one had to go to bed. And, uh, Ms. Molikov said that he's even more excited after being there for the parade to, to come. And so that just makes my little heart happy. And so I'm very, very excited for him. Um, so let's go out to the public and see if they have any comments, and then I'll read his statement.
Mayor, I don't have anybody on Zoom. I do have one in the chambers. Mr. Chapman, please come up.
Thank you, Mayor Byron Chapman. Uh, I, I too, I think from people that I communicate with and that sort of thing about the city, the, all of us, city staff, people that live here, work here. Um, it has been pretty much a revolving door when it comes to the issue of city manager. And, uh, there's a host of reasons as to why that is. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm very hopeful that based on what you had to go through in order to get there, uh, really nailing that point down so that, you know, the, the, the public, it's kind of difficult to figure out what's going on, let alone just about the time you're starting to get a bead on what is going on and how it goes, the, the, they're gone, they're out of here. So, uh, I would hope that, uh, we do indeed have a city manager that, uh, uh, hopefully hits that five-year mark and beyond, quite honestly, because that's really where everything starts to mesh. And, uh, if, uh, this particular individual can meet that, I, I think we'll all be better off for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Are there any other comments? I, I will say, I think what's also great about him is that he's not too young, where he doesn't have a lot of experience, but he's young enough that he wants to be here for a really long time. Councilmember Silhaj, you had another comment?
Yeah, I just didn't want to let the opportunity go to thank Mr. Scott for all that you did. You were very humble when you said, oh, I get to read it, but everyone did the work, except for that really Mark is doing all the work and making sure that when Sean comes, that he's ready and that he's prepped and that he knows what our issues are. And some of them are complex. And I just wanted to publicly thank you. One, you've been a godsend to this city over the last however many months you've been here, and we could not be more indebted to you and really appreciate all of your efforts. I know that you're probably ready to go, but we appreciate all that you've taken on and appreciate you also onboarding Sean so that we can have confidence in that. And so I wanted to just put that out there so everyone knows how hard you're working for this city also.
Yep. Yes. Go ahead.
Mayor Andriata's comments about his research reminded me. Sean, because I know you're going to be watching this. Uh, he, I don't know how many hundreds of hours of our meetings he listened to. Anyway, you can see the expectations that you set, and I'm sure that you're going to solve them and rise to them.
Yes, yeah. And, and I would, I would, um, piggyback on what Alyssa said. Mark, I tell people all the time, wish we could keep you. And I know that you say he's ready to go, and you are, like, I'm sure your wife would agree to have you home, but I know that you have fallen in love with us. And we, we, we will be seeing you a lot. Uh, well, maybe not a lot, but we'll be seeing enough of you once you're all finished and you wrap up here, because I think, um,
you're family now. And so you have to you have to stay involved at some level, I think. Awesome. Did you have anything else you wanted to say? You did, yes.
Yeah, no, no, I think you've all said it very well. It's what I would say is that blessed is the right word. We've been very blessed to have Mark join us at the point where he did. And I think restore trust of the council in in staff and hopefully begin to build bridges back staff to council as well. You've calmed the environment within City Hall down and got everybody comfortable again. And that is a very, very difficult task. But beyond that, I think during this recruitment, one of the reasons for the quality of candidates and the depth of the pool that we had was Mr. Scott being here. I think he is one of the best city managers in the state of California.
Absolutely.
Everybody knows that. And so a whole bunch of folks went in California, what the heck is Mark doing in Lincoln, California? What does he know that we don't know? And so, thank you for all you've done. I think there are opportunities for us to work together again in the future to the betterment of our city. If our new city manager is willing to do so.
Sean, if you're listening.
Go ahead, Councilmember Lortzen.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Sean, if you are listening, we're definitely looking forward to you coming here. And we have about five top number one priorities for you to tackle. So welcome aboard and get here quick.
That's great. All right, Sean did send us a statement that I'll I'll read, and I know he wanted to be here. To the Lincoln City Council, I'd like to start by briefly stating my regret for not being able to be physically present during your consideration of this appointment. As I've mentioned, I will be at one of my last two city council meetings in Riverbank, the very, the same very evening as this meeting, and thus unable to attend. With that said, I'd like to share just how grateful and fortunate I am for the opportunity to serve your beautiful community. After going through the extensive process of interviews and getting the pleasure of discussing the city council goals with each of you, I couldn't be more thrilled to serve this council and this community. I look forward to ensuring that Lincoln citizens receive the most professional and very best in municipal services. In the coming weeks, my family and I will begin working to relocate to Lincoln, a place we will be proud to call our home. I look forward to working with each of you, your excellent staff, and the community of Lincoln. I'll leave you with one prediction, which I think we can all agree on. Exciting times are ahead of us. See you soon, Sean Scully. And with that, I will take a motion to approve his contract.
I would be very excited to offer that motion.
Great.
Excited twice in one night.
Yes.
Very confused.
Roll call, please. Thank you. Councilmember Joyner?
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skent? Councilmember Lortzen?
Yes.
Councilmember Silhaj? And Mayor Andrea. Party, yes. Right. Thank you, everybody, for that. Okay, item 10C, Adopt Resolution 2021-236, approving new position classifications for Chief Innovation and Technology Officer and Finance Manager, and approving a new executive management salary range for full-time unrepresented city employees serving under individual employment contracts. So, Mr. Scott, are you going to handle this one as well?
I'll do the best I can.
Great, thank you.
This is my item. The, when I put this item together, I assumed it was going to be a consent calendar item because the first half of it, you've already been party to the creation of the two new positions. We just needed to bring back the job description to be adopted by the council. And I assume that was a consent calendar item. But then the second part of it is that I also proposed to the council, and we've talked about creating one salary range for senior management employees. And that is, we're obligated to do a public public, a public presentation and adoption as a non-consent item to adopt a salary scale because CalPERS, among others, has to use that and it's required to be adopted in this manner. The the two new positions, I won't belabor that because we talked about this at length a couple of meetings ago. It's the creation of the Chief Innovation and Technology Officer, Jen Brown, has been promoted into that position. It reflects her really extraordinary capabilities to take us into the 21st century, I might add. And the second position, Finance Manager, is the position that we've promoted Sandra Cook into. Sandra has really stepped up during the time when we needed leadership in in that department. In fact, right now, she's serving as Acting Finance Director. So she's she's even exceeded this level at this current time. So all I'm asking the council to do tonight is adopt the job descriptions. And everybody had fun trying to write a job description for Chief Innovation and Technology Officer. The other half, the the part about the salary range, I think I probably should explain this a little bit. My philosophy in working with senior management people is that it's it's really almost silly, I think, to think that it makes sense to take your senior management employees, I call it in this, executive management level employees, and to put them into a salary scale that has steps. You know, and the steps, you know, they're called merit step increases, but let's face it, in government, for the most part, if you if you're good enough to be continuing along, you usually get the step increase. And that's really not the right way to evaluate management people. The right way is to create annual work plans and objectives and to evaluate those at the end of the year and then to place compensation appropriately based on on the performance and the growth of the particular employee. And it just doesn't make sense to have that be determined by pre-existing 5% step increases as we do on on other positions in government. So the the technique that I've used and a fair number of cities use, I wouldn't say all do, is to create a broad range that in this particular case, I set the the bottom of the range at the first step of the lowest paid position and put the top range a little higher than the top step or the the current salary of the new city manager. And that's how we establish the range. I what I would hate to have people think is that now there's going to be steps within that range. There aren't going to be any steps in that range. There's no implication there that over time, everybody's going to go to the top of the range. That's not the case at all. And so anybody who looks at this and and reads into it that, boy, everybody's going to be making city manager money, that just isn't the case. It's it's the state requires us to report out senior employees' compensation changes anyway. So there's no way that somebody could just suddenly willy-nilly put people at the top of range. So the range makes sense from the standpoint of setting up a compensation structure and an evaluation structure for senior management. That's the purpose behind it, and that's what I'm asking the city council to adopt. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. Mayor Proton Joyner, do you have any comments or questions? Councilmember Carl Skent?
Just a comment, the comment being, this isn't any different than most businesses do. So I'm familiar with it and like it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Lortzen? Councilwoman Silhaj?
Questions is a comment that I appreciate the innovation and the way that you're trying to streamline and make things a little more have some incentives, we, you know, kind of tie it to that discussion we had last time of how are we retaining our staff and what kind of incentives can we give them? And I think that this is a much more individually focused model. And so I appreciate that.
You too. Thank you very much for that. And just to reiterate what we said last time, really appreciate these employees and the hard work that they've done and just the not even hard work, just the amazing work that they've done and just that they just keep plowing forward and just the the skill and the dedication. I really appreciate it. And thank you for putting this together. So let's go out to public. Do we have any comments?
We don't have any Zoom comments. I don't see any in the chamber.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back. Close public comment. And if you guys are ready, I will accept the motion on item 10C.
I will. We adopt Resolution 2021-235, approving the new positions and the executive management salary range.
Thank you. It's just, it's 236. You said 235, but that's okay. Just making sure we're clear on that. Okay, so we got a motion.
236.
236, yeah. Okay, so we got a motion in a second. Thank you. Can I have a roll?
Councilmember Carl Skent?
Yes.
Councilmember Joyner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lortzen?
Yes.
Councilmember Silhaj? And Mayor Andrea?
Yes. All right. So move on to item 11, which is council-initiated business. Mayor Proton Joyner? Councilmember Carl Skent?
I have none, but we have indicated quite a few requests for workshops, actually, and special items. And is somebody keeping that list? And are we gonna start? Are we gonna wait for Sean?
I think Sean would probably be happy to participate in one way or another, either in person or otherwise. If if we wanted to schedule something in January, we probably could. You know, we don't have to do it on the first Tuesday of the month. We could try to find any other date to do some of that. If there's specific topics you want to prioritize, we can we can do that.
If we could see the list
Okay.
in the email.
I'll get it out.
Then we'll come back and
Yeah.
prioritize.
Thank you.
Send it tomorrow.
Because we're all high priority when we mention.
Yeah. And the list is floating out there somewhere, right? Councilmember Lortzen, do you have any information items or council-initiated business?
No.
No, I'm sorry, council-initiated business. Okay. I have no business except for Ms. Scanlon. I was just wondering where the gavel is.
Sorry, I was looking for it for the meeting and I couldn't find it. We had two. Now I have none.
I actually didn't even think about it. And Alyssa said, where's your gavel?
You have one on ones at mine. I'll bring it next time.
Okay, she goes, where's the gavel? And I'm like, I don't know.
She had one, so I didn't worry about it.
I'm just teasing anyway. All right, you two.
Make it up to you.
Bring him home, bring him back, bring him back.
I never used mine once.
Well, you it's kind of hard to gavel when you're at home, right? Yeah.
It's my jam.
All right, so no council-initiated business, except for we're going to get our list of workshops. What about informational items? You gotta give your tip.
I have two.
Go ahead.
Did you say you had none?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And so I have two. I'll start. I was. I was thinking that you'd beat me to the homeless task force tomorrow.
I'll let you go ahead.
Okay, so tomorrow is the culmination, it seems, of this working group.
Phase one.
Of the first phase of it. And I just wanted to report out to the public that it's happening and that Councilmember Joyner and I and and actually Christine has also been active on the steering committee. And I just wanted to state for the record that I find that there's, we have a lot, I have a lot of concerns. There's a lot of concerns with it, and I hope that at some point we're able to bring it forward and discuss it as a full council, how the council would like us to move forward with it, because I'm starting to feel uncomfortable in my role on it without getting your input. So wanted to put it out there since we can't really talk about it. And Paul and I talk about it a lot.
You didn't say what?
So it's the same, the working, well, you should know, it's the working group that we were appoint, oh, I see. So the working group that we were appointed to sit on for the county at the county level, there's two representatives from every jurisdiction, including the Board of Supervisors at this level, and we're coming to, I guess, gain consensus on vision, statements, guiding principles, actionable items, and this kind of where should our resources be focused planned? Am I stating that kind of in the broad sense, right? And it just feels very rushed and very forced. We have significant concerns. Councilmember Joyner and I are very much on the same page on a lot of that. And I'm starting to feel uncomfortable in if it moves forward in another phase or whatever, without having a discussion at the council level, because I think we're going to want to know where the city would like that direction to go. So I just wanted to put that out there for the public and for council. It's a thing. And that final meeting of this phase is happening tomorrow, and hopefully we can report on out on that January. Right, because there's another meeting before then.
Right.
There is not.
And then the number two thing that I wanted to report out on is I just really, really wanted to recognize Chief for your just, I mean, exemplary. I cannot say enough nice things about how your officers and how you led. For those who aren't tracking what happened in the city of Lincoln over the last week, it was a hell of a week. We had an incident at 12 Bridges High School wherein a student made social media threats anonymously. And it was against perhaps bringing a gun to campus and violet, a suggestion of violence on campus. And within 24 hours of our police force finding out about it, they had an arrest. These things are not easy to do. You utilized your resources. You reached out to the, you did every single thing right. You didn't incite the community. And so I wanted to recognize your officers and you. And then the very next day following that, we had a scare at Lincoln High School.
Yeah.
And poor Chief was stuck in San Diego at Chief Police Officers Training, completely separate and separated from his force. And you were just in command. Everyone knew it. There was no doubt. I was in communication with Chief and with and Mark and with the superintendent the whole time. And then I met with Superintendent the following day, and she could not say enough complimentary, I can't believe how calm your officers were. I can't believe how many ways that could have gone sideways and didn't things about it. And so I wanted the public to hear that we say nice things all the time about how lucky we are to have the officers that we do. And I know that we have spoken publicly also about how you guys are very picky about who you'll bring on to our force. And I know that Chief Lee had vacancies because they just weren't up to par. The group who came in, he was like, there's no way I'm putting that on our streets. And boy, did it play out. What was that Thursday? Right. So for those of you who haven't seen the video, his officers walk into a cafeteria where there is a suspected gun threat. And it's like they're showing up to like cite some kid for a code violation or something. It was decomist, cool as a cucumber, guns weren't drawn. The kid refused to take, you know, his hands out, and it just was deescalated. I mean, the use of force was as minimal as possible, and I just want to thank you. And your leadership was incredible. Your officers deserve all of the commendation possible. And I'm going to read the list if that's okay with everyone, and then I'll stop talking. So those who were involved in handling both of those just incredibly like gut-wrenching, difficult situations, they handled it like you'd think we did it every day. And I doubt they've ever done it before, and hopefully we never have to again. So Lieutenant Keith Johnson, Sergeant Matt Williamson, Corporal Brett Snyder, Officer Anna Ellis, Officer John Smith, SRO Wes Collins, SRO Dan Searle, am I saying that right? And SRO Laura Savage, Detective JP Shaw, Detective Cody Sober, Dispatch Supervisor Stacy Williamson, Dispatch Trainee Danielle Sims, Admin Analyst Renee Maldonado. She was the Business Hours Media Coordination and Department Logistics, and also the media output was just on point and really thank you. And then Sergeant Jeff Morse, who was the After Hours Media Coordinator. And then of those who worked just the Lincoln, the 12 Bridges incident were Officers Johnson, Shaw, Sober, Searle, and Officer Taylor Brown, who's field training with Officer Ellis. So I just wanted to make sure the community is aware that you guys were amazing. You really protected our students and community that day, and we're really proud of you.
Thank you for saying that. I would actually like to just add a little bit to that. And you said that so well, and thank you for reading all the names. We talk all the time about, you know, our public safety levels and, you know, we need more police and fire. But I'm gonna tell you what, Chief, I don't think a force of 100 could have done a better job than what you did with your with your with your men and women, especially since you were out of town. And I know it killed you not to be here. Yeah. But yes, and I
No questions the whole time.
I was so also very appreciative of between you and Mr. Scott, the updates that we got. People would say, did you hear? And I'm like, yeah, I I every five minutes, you know, but I and I appreciate that. That really, really helps. Also, Melissa mentioned your, you know, the the public information output, the fact that the way that you guys put out the the real information very timely, very quickly, helps to dispel rumors. helps to dispel rumors because man, those things, poof, people just make up stuff. And I'm on there like, no, no, no. And then, you know, but you guys, so amazing. And, and not only, not only the, the two school things, which what, I, I agree, what a crazy week like that. And there was things going on all over the country, right? And I think that speaks to what we've been talking about using some of our ARPA monies. The mental health of our students are, is suffering. And so we need to address that. But, but first you guys eliminated the threat, which was what the most important thing. But not only those two issues at the, at the schools, but just crime in general. Man, you guys are on it. You are on it. And we are still one of the safest places to live. And I am so appreciative of that. And I, I'm gonna tell you what, it was such a great feeling to, to be, I mean, it was a horrible situation. Like we would never want that. But the opportunity to brag on you guys and just say, our, our staff, our, our, our police force is, is top notch and nobody could do it better. And I'm so, so grateful that all of our kids are safe and the parents felt good about it. And so I just want to reiterate and say, thank you, thank you, thank you for that. I really appreciate that. Yeah, you sure can.
And the chief may want to say something too, but you, you made the comment about small, but mighty.
Yeah.
I've been the manager of those cities with 100 or more police officers. And I agree. For, for a small operation, they really did it. They did it just exactly right. And it's, it's even a bigger tribute when the chief is actually out of town and it's off like that. And we feel bad that Matt couldn't be here because as you say, I know police officers, he, he must have been.
I could feel it through his email, it was killing him.
But.
Yes.
But what I also know is that he was in a class with a whole bunch of police chiefs and he had bragging rights last week.
Yes, yes.
I'm sure that, that they were aware of that.
And you know, I think it's also, again, not that we would want any of those situations, but what was happening last week, I think it really served to boost the competence of our community in our police force. I mean, everyone was just so grateful and so appreciative of the work that you guys did. And so, yeah, I, I agree to all that and you, you sure can.
The other part of the information item I wanted to put out is that I really appreciated the message that you are sending to our community. That 24 hour turnaround was, I mean, you got bragging rights for life on that, that's insane. That doesn't happen.
Dang impressed.
But I will say, the week before, there were two of the exact same threats in Elk Grove. There were threats in Fairfield, there were threats in Southern California, there are threats in Rockland or Roseville. There were threats all over the state. Do you want to know who the first one was to bring action against violent threats?
Lincoln.
It was you. And the message that you're sending to our community is, one, violence is not tolerated here. Two, we will not take it lightly. Three, our police force is consistent, will hunt it down and will take it as far as necessary to make sure that we know that this is not the place that you come with that. And I wanted our community to know that that is a sentiment we all share and talk to your kids because it's not something that we're going to take lightly. And I really appreciated that you, we didn't even have to ask you. You were on top of it and we were the example in this state. And did you know, did you notice in the press, Elk Grove press charges the week after we did? So it really is something that will change outcomes for our students and make our kids feel safer. So I wanted to put that out there also.
That's good. I'm wondering if it's appropriate. I mean, obviously they would say we were just doing our job, but because this was such a unusual and back-to-back events and with the coordination, would it be appropriate for us sometime in the near future to do some kind of commendation for the officers? And for Chief?
Suggests we let the chief give us some ideas on how that might best.
I would really like to do that. I would really like to recognize your, your team and give some commendations for the work that they did on this.
Do that, and if I can just chime in real fast.
Yes. Yes. We'll stop talking now.
Well, you know, every chief says that, well, it's the staff that did all the work. But it is truly the staff that did all the work. I appreciate the accolades, but I'm deferring it all to my staff and truly. I mean, I was out of town at post require training. And I felt quite helpless sitting in the classroom and then transferring into my hotel room with a laptop and iPad and two phones and AirPods in, making phone calls and, and sending messages. And I, I ran the math and said, if I went code three from San Diego, I can get there in about six hours. I elected to stay put. I figured I'd be better served being able to help coordinate it. But I just took care of some of the high level things and helped with the messaging. And that's, we're in a different age of law enforcement. Transparency is a word that you always hear, but getting the information out there. Having school age kids myself, I know what it feels like when, as a parent, you don't know what's going on. So we owe it to the community to let them know everything we can about what's going on. And, and we're going to do that. And that was kind of one of my main things working with Renee is to push out the social media. And, you know, there's some work we can do to get those things out a little bit faster, maybe some different formats. But we're able to use this as a learning experience. Because these things don't happen all the time, but we're going to be even more ready next time. This, this worked out perfectly in, in all respects. But we can always do better. So we're going to use those. And, and speaking to the kids, we're going to leverage this as it's still fresh in their minds to do some education and just say, this posting of things, that's not okay. You're going to be held to account. And you mentioned the mental health, that's a big issue too, because that's a major component in this. So be working with the schools to help whatever's missing there to just help fill that void to, when they have that moment of decision, if I'm going to post this or not. It's not a joke, it's not funny. It, it's a crime. And the, I, I think the stats I heard, I'm going to get the stats a little wrong, but the, the student population of 12 Bridges High School is like 575-ish or so. There were over 300 kids not there the day of the threats because they were so concerned. That's not okay to disrupt schools like that. That is just, the threat aside, disrupting education like that is not okay. So we're going to use this moving forward to help educate and, and hopefully have kids think twice about doing this. But again, just to wrap up, thank you for, for your, your words. And but again, all the, all the credit goes to my staff. They were able to operate autonomously without me there, which is huge for me. It makes me feel good that, okay, even if I'm not there, they're going to handle business. They're going to handle it the right way without someone looking over their shoulder. They did it right, knowing the cameras were there and they did the right thing. So absolute praise to, to PD staff and they did a great job. So, but I'll definitely work with you on, to help give you some ideas for what you want to do and we'll make that happen.
Great, thank you, I would really appreciate that, thank you. And I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with you and you've been so kind, sitting there quiet. No, that's okay. Hi Travis, thanks for being here and being so patient and. And yes.
Happy to help.
Yes.
Those items were on consent calendar and.
Okay.
We were hoping for lots of discussion.
Yeah.
Have more mic time tonight.
Yes, well, thank you for being here, really appreciate it. It's nice to meet you face to face.
Thank you for asking.
Yeah, of course. Are there any more questions, comments from the council, any business? Okay, well, I would just like to end the meeting by wishing everybody a very Merry Christmas and happy holidays. Be well, be safe, be healthy and we'll see you next year. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.